I'm going to call to order this regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education on June 10th, 2019 at 7:00. Tonight, we have Ms. Anders, who's the First Level League Junior and First Level League Advisor. We have Shelley Delio, who's the First Tech Challenge Advisor. Nick Mathis and John Van Gimbelier, First Robotics Advisors. Along with the robotics teams and Mr. Stephanopoulos. If you guys want to come up to say the pledge of allegiance. Come on up.
Don't be shy.
You guys can stand all up here, both sides of the podium would be great. You guys are going to face the audience, and when I say your name, just give a little wave so everybody knows who you are, okay?
You guys can file in.
You guys can go with the little bus, you can go in front too if you guys want. Perfect. Okay, so when I say your name, just give a little wave, okay guys? All right, tonight here, we have Jason Jagoda, Ethan Berman, Alexis Stephanopoulos, Olivia Manchik, Kayden Crampton, Aiden Folsky, Kennedy Varan, Rosalyn Melton, Nick Stavoy. Sorry if I pronounce your names wrong, too. John Flanka, Jacob Pacito, Mason Brickell, Michael Condon, Mikey Delio, Courtney Henry, Casey Stees, Joe Pacito, Evan Flanka, Jacob Schoenburn, Edgardo Alfaro, Megan Condon, Luke Evans, Alexis Henry, Christopher Rochan, Melissa Rochan, Jacob Ryan, Remy Sodnik, Courtney Van Gimbelier, Logan Van Gimbelier, and Michael Foss. All right, oh, did I miss anyone? What's your name? Katie Devote. All right, we also have Katie Devote. All right, if you guys all want to turn around, and you guys can lead us in the pledge whenever you're ready, okay?
I declare my flag, why we live in the states of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, wherever it is that we are.
We're going to bring you guys back up in just a few minutes. All right, next we have our mission statement, Angela.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community.
Thank you, roll call Angela.
Chris?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
And I am present, you have a call.
Thank you.
Looking for approval of the agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next is the approval of the consent agenda. Looking for a motion?
My motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Support. Is there any discussion?
There was a couple corrections that were brought to our attention, so we've uploaded them to the website for the official minutes that were indicated. Jamie also has a copy of them. And then, personnel report, as you can see tonight, we've got a couple people here retiring and leaving us as a district. Jessica Gerard, our Child Care and Preschool Aid, will be leaving us at the end of this school year. She actually moved out of the district, and it's a little challenging for her to come back here. Brian Jarzmar, middle school teacher is retiring. Kim Krieger, elementary teacher is retiring. Kathy Miller, Child Care and Preschool Aid is retiring. Deanna Powers, Elementary School is retiring. Pam Probst, she's the Secretary for the Elementary School is retiring. Jill Taylor from the high school is retiring. We received her resignation from Jackie Washicap. I did it pretty close, Mr. Washicap. She's retiring or resigning from childcare, but she still will be working in the food service. And Alice Weaver, a bus driver, so we'll be honoring some of our retirees later on in the agenda. As far as the claims and accounts, I received a couple questions. One was from Board Number Zubi regarding two checks, 49-215 and 49-244. There were two checks that were issued by accident, one had been returned, only one was cast at 49-15. Check number 49-03 for Outdoor Ventures is for garnishment of wages. 49-202 from Brock and Scott PPLC is also a garnishment of wages. I believe that was it from the claims and accounts. Have any other questions?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next we have our true blue moment, a portion of our agenda where we recognize the great things that are happening in Richmond. And here tonight, we have the First Level League Junior, First Level League, First Tech Challenge, and First Robotics Teams. Ms. Durst, if you'd like to come up and get us started, that would be great.
Just, I know we're supposed to just talk about the podium, too short, I'll be carrying anyways.
Oh, we can.
We just had our, this is the Junior FLL team, we just had our spring competition May 28th in Heartland. And there were 14 teams there, 10 of them were teams from Heartland, and four were our teams. So I have a few representatives here. I know I could go on and on and talk, but is anybody telling them what the best thing about robotics this year was? Everyone volunteer, don't be shy.
Working together with.
You'll take the point.
Here, I'll take this off so you can pass the mic. Okay?
Working together with a team. Having fun with Legos. I really like to build the base. The mini dogs.
I like the program.
I like the program.
My friends.
Also Legos.
I like the Legos.
I enjoy watching every one of them, they're so creative, the things that they come up with, the different, I just, wow.
It's amazing.
It was amazing.
They are very excited, I know that some of you saw some things ahead of time, but I would like you to get a chance to come on up and come over, and they could kind of tell you about what they learned about. The promise was that they had to build a moon base if someday that we have to live on the moon. And what would we need to survive and live on the moon? And so they talked a lot about the different things, to get oxygen and energy and food. Now that we all remember that, right? Okay, so they're ready, they're ready to tell you, so if you'd like to come on over, of course. If you guys go ahead, go right back to your field, okay? And then go raise some questions.
Hi, my name is Shelley Delio, I'm the coach for the Richmond Middle School Robotics Team, the Blue Devils Tech Team. This season, we have faced a lot of challenges due to this was my first year in coaching and learning how the first program works. This season, we were able to attend one competition. However, we as a team had a lot of fun learning things together and while building self-confidence and leadership skills with our students. At this time, I would like Michael Delio and Joe Pacito to talk a little bit about our robot.
So, the aim of the game was to get as many cargo pieces into a certain area to earn points. And to do that, we built an intake, which is specifically designed to suck the minerals into it, so we can transfer them to the depot that we needed to deposit them. This was used as, this is the plow. We use them to push and herd some pieces, but when we need to put them into the intake, we have a special button to move this upwards, so we can put them into the intake. The limit for minerals is two at a time, and this is specifically designed to hold only two minerals. And the problem was, is we experimented with a few of it by using the pieces. And the more we realized, the more it just, they ended up falling out. So we ended up building this to keep the minerals into the intake, so while we were transferring the minerals to the depot, they wouldn't fall out.
All right, I'm going to talk a little bit more about other mechanisms of the robot. This giant tower in the back, we use for, because at the beginning of the match, we tried to choose to start underneath the.
The lander.
The lander. The lander, which was this giant moon lander looking thing in the middle of the playing field. You could either be attached, maybe two inches above the ground, which would give you points at the beginning of the match. Or you would be on the ground underneath it, which would give you points at the beginning of the match. We were able to decide a couple of failure in the competition, mostly came from the lander at the beginning of the match. What they did to check it was, they took two of the blocks that, two of the block minerals they had, and tried to stick under the robot, and it would stick under the robot. So, at the end of the match as well, we also had to climb, which we had to extend the tower, and we were all the way to take the box. And we were hooked on, and then pull the tower back down, pointing us up, up two inches, like we were at the beginning.
The other mechanism that we like, that I like to mention is, well, it's not really a mechanism, but we have these weights here, because every time we drive the robot, it ends up popping wheelies at the back when we start and when we start and stop. So to keep that from happening, we weighed down the front, so it would have smooth ways to move. And we also have these sensors, and we have these color sensors, that turn HSV, Huge Saturation Value, into RGB, Red, Green, Blue, so we could scan out yellow pieces. Because in the beginning of the match, you'd have to sample by knocking over a certain piece on the field, which was, which is what this is used for. And it can only be used during autonomous program, so we can't control it to do that. So we use these sensors to scan, to scan out that single piece to find out, to find out where it was. It usually scans the two pieces that are in the front, in the front. If it doesn't scan yellow for these two pieces, even if the yellow's here, if it makes a mistake, it'll automatically turn and not over this piece. It sometimes wouldn't be able to see the yellow, but most of the time, we were able to sample pretty accurately.
We could do, with our robot, we're going to look forward to gravity, we could do perfect turns, perfect 93 turns, whatever way we wanted. Using, we have to have these omnis, which omnis are, the omni directional wheels, that can move, that can roll like this, and then they can do like a roll. These be used for traction, which helps support the omnis, because alone, the omnis are great, but you'd be sliding everywhere. We don't want us to be sliding everywhere. And it's the same thing on the other side. We use chains, only all of them together, so they move in a nice pattern, forward like that. So that we always have perfect consistency with the wheels.
Any questions? That seems pretty complicated for my mind to comprehend, so I don't even know what questions to ask, but you guys did a great job. Thank you. And a wonderful job explaining that, I might add.
Thank you. I do have one more thing.
Of course.
At this time, I would like to acknowledge and give a special thank you to a certain parent, that if it wasn't for him for this season, I don't think how, I don't think we would have got this far. At this time, I would like Mr. Steve Pacito to come up here. Thanks, Steve. Thanks for everything that you did. And also, I'd like to give a special thank you to Nick Mathis, John Rochan, and John Van Gimbelier, and the high school team for coming after school every day and helping our students to succeed in where they are at today. Thank you. FTC is growing as a team, we are able to have, we're able to have one team this past year, but with the growing interest, we would like to expand our team to two to three at our upcoming season. Also, I look forward to next season, and at this time, I'd like to introduce our FRCT team, Nick Mathis.
Hello, for those of you that don't know me, I'm sure you all do by now, but my name is Nick Mathis. I am a Richmond alumni and now the head coach of FR164130. So we're going to kind of do a little demo here for you guys. Luke and Chris and Melissa are going to go over, hey Eddie, bringing everybody up. We're going to do a little quick demo here, and kind of show you what we came up with this season. And Luke's going to talk about the game a little bit, and they're going to go and demo the robot, and then talk about some of the accolades that we had this year and whatnot. Yeah, I got the game.
All right, so the game this year was called Destination Deep Space, and basically, the goal was to take these hatch panels. So actually, the beginning of the game, you'd start on these different level habitat platforms, you had level one, level two, and three, but you couldn't start on three. So you'd come off of those habitat platforms, and you would score a different amount of points depending on which one you came up with, because they're all different heights, different difficulty you'd come off of. And then you had a 15-second autonomous slash sandstorm period, where you could either use cameras to manually drive your robot, or autonomous programming to autonomous control your robot. And after that 15 seconds, big shades would come up, and you could see the field, and you could play the game as normal. And so what you'd do is, you had these hatch panels that were stationed at two stations on your side of the field, and your goal was to pick them up and place them at these different locations, one of which being a cargo ship, and they'd sit on these velcro panels, and that would hold a ball in, which you would then take from a station or the depot sitting right next to the station. And you'd take your robot and you'd bring it over here, and that's five points, two for the hatch and three for your ball. What made the game difficult was that on either side of your field, yours half of the field, there were these rockets, and they were six, there were three levels again, or there are three levels, and it took 12 game pieces to fully fill them, six hatch and six balls. And when you did that, you got a ranking point. Ranking points boost you up in the rankings, allowing you to rank higher, to pick better teams, to eventually try to win that medal. And once you got to the end game, you had to either, there was another opportunity to get a ranking point, getting 12 points on the habitat by climbing to level three was the easiest way to do it, because you need 15 points on your habitat climbs to get the ranking points. That only needs you to need two robots to complete tasks rather than three, by two getting on to level two, which gave you six points, and one getting on to level one. That's three points. And these hatch panels, they, there's different bumpers on every side of the, what do you call it, like rocket cargo ship, that if you don't place them exactly perfectly, they will fall. So it was a very challenging year indeed, and we learned a lot on what works and what doesn't. That's about it. So we're going to show off our robot. All right, so this is how we would pick a hatch, it's going.
So while they're going and driving, all the positions that you're seeing here are all completely programmed. So all Chris is doing is just pressing pre-programmed buttons that we've programmed the robot to do. So like releasing the hatch mechanism is one, going to grab a ball is another, so they're all pre-programmed in position. So like that, all that is is just clicking a button. So what's nice is, is that by being able to have that, it takes away some driver error. And that way, it allows us to do certain things, work on the fly faster. So as this video up here is playing, it's a little bit in our practice field that we actually have for here on, now we have a full-size practice field that we have 24/7 access for now. So that's kind of just showing a little bit about actually our gameplay, obviously, we can only do so much in a little spot. But one big thing that I want to talk about, Luke, you want to stop right here, go level one. Is this green light you're going to see right here. This is a 400-lupe vision tracking camera. So what's really nice is, all he has to do is align himself, he presses a button, and it'll autonomously drive himself into it and grabs the hatch by itself. So that's completely pressing one button, all pre-programmed, everything. That's all, it's called a line light, so that's all previously programmed and everything. So by having that, we're able to do a lot of different things to speed up our time, because obviously, time is the essence when it comes to these things. So, Chris, you want to talk about what we did?
This year, in our first competition with Sandy Park.
All right, so I'll talk about how we did our competitions. This year, our first competition was West Michigan Gull Lake. It was during a Week Three event, and we were semifinal as captains, and we were semifinal as captains in the fourth season alliance. And we made it up to semifinals, and unfortunately, we had an issue with the robot, and we ended up losing to the first seed. We ended up winning the event. And so, come on, two weeks later, we changed up our hatch mechanism to so much. Changed up, made some iterations, because at our first event, we didn't even play hatches because of our unsuccessful hatch mechanism. So at our second event in Marysville, we ran into some more issues with the robot. However, we still ended up ranking seventh and being the fourth seed captain once more. We made the semifinals, but however, we lost again to the first seed, but only by a few points because of some more issues that we had. But we lost to the alliance that ended up winning the event. And so, we did pick up to qualify for the state championship, so we attended that in Week Seven at Saginaw Valley University. And there, we ended up ranking a little bit lower than we expected, but we still ended up being on the fifth seed line. We got fixed by the team, one of the teams that started us, Team 27, Rochelle and Markston. And they picked us, so we ended up unfortunately getting knocked out in the quarterfinals, by some more issues. And we got knocked out by the team that ended up making semifinals. So that, we did turn up to state though, to qualify as a world, and so we attended the world championship. Unfortunately, we ran into a lot more issues, we got broken by some schemes, and we did, and we did fine, so we're good. So that happened Week Nine, so that was, that's about it, that's about our season. We had a pretty successful season, we ranked seven seed in Michigan out of 514, so we didn't get through.
Unless you guys have any questions?
Unless you want to like know more about.
Yes, you want to come on up, if you guys want to come on up, you get a closer look, please feel free. Luke and Chris and a couple of the other kids will be more than willing to kind of show you what the reins are.
Nick, can you explain the practice field?
Absolutely, yeah. So what's kind of cool is, this year, we were able to rein in a full-time practice field. So there is a company in Port Huron called PJ Wallbanks, and as part of PWAR, which we are part of the Blue Wire Air Robotics Alliance. And as a part of that, we were able to, now that we have a 5-1-2-3 status and that kind of thing, we were able actually to take on, being able to do this. So at this area, it's about 80 foot by 40 foot space, where we have a full field and not, we now have 24/7 access. So anytime during the build season, because we're on a six-week crunch time, so that thing is completely designed, fabricated, and put together and ran in six weeks, fully programmed. And we can't touch it after that. So with that, having the practice field is huge, because then we can, you know, tune programming to certain positions on the field and that kind of thing, before we actually get to competition. So again, it speeds up our time, you know, the laps of not having that would take us a couple matches to be able to tune and that kind of thing. So by having that, we're able to completely get ahead, you know, and jumpstart on it, so.
Was this the place where the governor?
Correct, this was the, there's actually, the day that Governor Whitmer came and spoke the elementary school, she actually had stopped at PJ Wallbanks, because I guess him and his company and the state are doing like this trade school partnering ship thing. And there's actually a picture with Governor Whitmer and PJ Wallbanks and that robot while we were at a competition.
Correct, does the robot have a name?
Pressurize. There's a theme behind that, it's rising from pressure as we create. Yeah, it's also based off of.
So that space, that's ours, right there, that we're looking at?
Correct, there's eight teams that share.
Share at that spot.
So yeah, but I have a key card, just like we do for the school, so I can get it whenever I want to, so.
That's awesome. And it's always, good job, guys, it's very impressive what you guys did with the robot. Thank you, all right, moving on, we have presentations, so Mr. Rossley for the recognition of your candidates.
As I mentioned earlier, we have several staff members who are leaving us for retirement. So they may have a smile on their face, but they are going to be very missed in this organization, because when you hear the years of service they provided, Richmond Community Schools or just the education field in general, it's pretty impressive. So I'm going to begin with Mr. Kochen, and with the staff from Lee Elementary School. So as the board, once Mr. Kochen's done, if you want to go on that side and line up on the side to shake the retirees' hands.
Okay, I'm going alphabetical order, make it easier. So I would like to introduce Mrs. Kim Krieger. Would you like to come on up and join me, please? That way you don't have to stand up here by myself. Before I get started, I'll talk about all the four retirees at Lee Elementary. This'll be my third year, they really made me feel welcomed, helped me, worked together, kind of developed those professional and personal relationships, which now may be building principle much easier. So some of Mrs. Krieger's highlights, we kind of had discussions, I talked to all the retirees, so just some of the highlights over the years. So for Mrs. Krieger, 14 years at Richmond Schools. Some of her highlights, she saw one of her first fifth grade classes graduate last year, 2018. She also had some of those students when they were in kindergarten, so kind of give you a span of her career, the students, their career at Richmond. That group, a little bit special about that group, is that group gave her a surprise birthday party, and they planned it all by themselves, so they said, right? Provided pizza, you know, kind of had the big celebration, and their big present was, they bought her a whiteboard. I don't believe it was an interactive whiteboard, just an old-fashioned. Which was a step above the chalkboard, which they replaced with the whiteboard. She mentioned one student kind of stood out as a kindergarten student, that student had Asperger's Syndrome. So not only did the student learn a lot from Mrs. Krieger, but Mrs. Krieger learned a lot from that student, which is what great teachers do. They now like teach the students what they've learned from the students, and also some of their individual tricks of that student. She still sees that student to this day, and she enjoys looking back, a lot of the classes that she had, made some picture books, letters, which know some of those very good memoirs. And she, as we work together, I know there's been some, you know, personal things throughout everyone's lives. What I really appreciate about Mrs. Krieger is, we've been able to have those conversations. What I really appreciate about Mrs. Krieger is we've been able to have those conversations, personal conversations and also professional. So she's a true professional. She'll definitely be missed. Though I know the third grade team will miss her as well, all the staff members at Lee Elementary. And next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Kathy Miller. Once again, Kathy, I spent 14 years at Richmond Schools. One thing I can always count on Kathy in the morning, when I'm lucky enough to hold the door for the preschool students. She always has a smile as she's carrying 10 different things and trying to hold hands with the students and kinda get them all in the right direction down the hallway. Always greets the students with a smile, greets the parents with a smile. She's always very warm and welcoming. She's enjoyed all the interaction with all the students throughout the course of the year. As she worked with the preschool students and the childcare, some highlights is that she stays in touch with the students, gets invited to their graduate, high school graduation parties. I remember talking with her, just a board meeting ago, two board meetings ago, when we were recognizing the top 10. And she pointed out, yeah, that student when they were in preschool, I remember that student. So I mean, just once again, seeing them at the preschool, very beginning of their stages of their education, to the very end when they are so successful. And I truly believe Mrs. Miller helped with that foundation for those students. She's contributed to the childcare program, seeing changes in personalities over the years. And always have those professional conversations where she can give some insight, you know, what has worked, what hasn't worked. Just some of those thoughts and some of the ideas that she has. This is the second year that Lee Elementary has been a Green Club. We've had some good recognition and Mrs. Miller's been a very integral part in that. Just looking back, last year, 2017, 2018, the Green Club was recognized as a top green school in Macomb County, which is a great honor for the first year of having the green school, having the Green Club. And this past year voted most improved because they made the most significant improvements, gained more points than any other school in Macomb County. So we went from a green school to a Emerald, Evergreens, what we'll get next. Yes. One of the fun things we work with, I think Mrs. Miller can identify every plastic cap for anything that is produced. The Green Club has been collecting caps all school year in an effort to make, to get a bench made out of it that we're gonna have at Lee Elementary. And we're getting two because people have been so generous donating their plastic caps that they didn't want anymore. So I know Mrs. Miller spent hours after school washing the caps. And she'll be taking a trip to Indiana soon.
July 11.
July 11th to drop off all the caps. And then sometime in July, we'll be getting those benches, which I'm sure Mrs. Miller would like to come back and see them install. Sit in them, hang out with them, spend her retirement years, come back to Lee, sitting on the benches that she helped get. So once again, thank you for all that you've done. It's been a pleasure working with you. And next, I would like to introduce Mrs. Deanna Powers. So I had the, after we did just a little social gathering, a little cake for the retirees on Friday, had just a chance to talk with Mrs. Powers and she kinda gave me a little bit of the history of over the years. As she talked about all the different grades she's taught, all the different subjects, the layoffs, being called back, which is good. I guess that's a good part of layoffs is you get called back. And talked about she's taught arts, PE, technology, kindergarten, third grade. There's a point where in a seven-year span, she made some type of a change where there's a different grade level, moving the classroom. In seven years, she moved, made that move seven times. So this will be your last time. Nice smile. Yes, goodness. So, so I mean, what that shows is just that, you know, whatever it takes, whatever she's asked. One of the best quotes that as she kinda, you know, we talked, she gave me a little bit of some information. As she talked about moving seven times in seven years, her philosophy was, "I'm gonna bloom wherever I'm planted." So I mean, that's about as good a philosophy as you can have. Being flexible in education, just you'll never know what's gonna happen year to year, but just always having a positive attitude. That's probably the best way to describe Mrs. Powers, that she's throughout her career and as I've been working for her last three years is, you know, whatever, just what do I need to do? What can I do to help? Just have those professional conversations. So that's really, you know, made working with Mrs. Powers not much of a pleasure and a lot easier and just have those professional conversations. So once again, thank you for everything you've done, Mrs. Powers. And I'd like to introduce Mrs. Dan Probst. Now, first things asked Mrs. Probst today is how much time she wanted me to leave to her so she can speak on her own? And she said, "None at all." I know, working with Mrs. Probst very closely for the last three years. Honored to be working with her and having her as, I don't wanna say my secretary, but working closely with her together as a team. Learned a lot, you know, anytime you come into the building as a new administrator, trying to figure out, okay, what's the Richmond way to do things or how things done, what's worked, what hasn't, as I mentioned before. You know, Mrs. Probst never said, "We have to do it this way. It's been done this way in the past." She'd always kinda let me figure it out and always give me some insight of, you know, how things were done or how things, how it's worked in the past. So we've had many conversations. I appreciate that she has had the patience with me. I know sometimes in a busy day, I may be a little bit short and, you know, not as polite as I should be. So if I ever offended you, I guess the last day now, I can say, "I'm sorry." I promise it won't happen again. Well, try not to in this next few days. It won't happen again after this week. So once again, everything that she does, she's a true professional. Anytime a student or a parent comes in the office, that person next to them becomes their top priority. They know their needs, what they want, to make them feel welcome. I know anytime we have new families, you know, we've been busy with tours and everything, just how welcoming secretaries of both Mrs. Probst and Mrs. Pinzker make those families feel at home whether trying to choose a school or trying to see if Richmond's the right fit for them. So definitely gonna be a huge loss. Her evaluation was very easy for the comments, just saying, you know, she's irreplaceable with all the knowledge, the warmth, and just what she brings to the school. Since she officially announced her retirement during the fourth grade awards assembly, I felt, you know, take it upon myself to announce to every parent, every student that was there for the fourth grade awards that Mrs. Probst was retiring. One fourth grade student just yelled, "Oh no!" So I do think that kinda explains it all. It's just that's how we feel that Mrs. Probst is retiring. First it's like, "Oh no, what are we gonna do?" But then it's like, great for her, she deserves it. I know I didn't mention this to, about some LAs, but spending time with the grandkids, spending time with the family, which I would think at that point, when you're just ready, you can spend all that time, which is, I'm looking forward to sometime then. I can do that too, spend all that time with the family. So once again, thank you for everything that you've done and thanks for making my first three years at Lee Elementary, my first two years at Richmond, just a great time. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Bartel's come up next. We have, at RMS, we have two retirees, one Mr. Hamlin and Mr. Jarzma, and Mr. Jarzma the second. Just wanna say a couple of things about Mr. Hamlin, who couldn't be here tonight. I first got to know Mr. Hamlin, some of you know, when I lived with his brother George in a condo some 20, 21 years ago. And as a teacher, when I worked with Mr. Hamlin at the high school, he would do anything that we ever asked, coached many sports for us. Sometimes we'd be short a coach and he would volunteer to, to take on that role for the students. And Mr. Hamlin certainly wasn't a stranger to non-athletic issues. He was at many band concerts, choir concerts. He'd get to cheer competitions, wouldn't be out of the ordinary to see him show up at robotics. If it was a, our Richmond Community School events, Mr. Hamlin was usually there supporting the kids. So we wish him the best of luck in his future endeavors. Come on up, Mr. Jarzma.
Just like Mr. Hamlin, I didn't say that Mr. Hamlin was here 17 years and Mr. Jarzma 17 as well. Started off here at Lee, came to us from a bigger district. Was offered to go back to the bigger district, but he liked the camaraderie of the teachers in the community and having each other's backs. And so he turned down more of a financial opportunity to stay in Richmond Community Schools because of the atmosphere. Working, I've worked with Brian for 11 years and Brian is not afraid to try new things. I consider Brian a team player. He volunteered to do five nervously, a five-six split, which is a lot of work, a tremendous amount of work. Double prepping for your fifth grade classroom and your sixth grade classroom. But I couldn't, it couldn't have gone better with you and those students. And I know those students have since long graduated and I know they're very successful in their colleges. He has our students write letters to themselves and he saves them. And then at eighth grade promotion, you see those big packets that Ms. Borg and I had passed and Mr. Birkmeyer and I this year handed out, those big packets are from Mr. Jarzma, the letters themselves. And this one, I don't know how he remembers it, but I know remembering people's names is difficult. But he meets and greets every student at the door every single morning and they all have their special handshake. And he knows all of them. And what's neat about this is every year when seniors in high school graduate, they come back and this year led by their high school principal, they wanna see their middle school teachers. And Mr. Jarzma's always on that list, students wanting to come say hi to Mr. Jarzma or say goodbye to Mr. Jarzma and tell them what their future plans are. And I'll be darned if he doesn't remember their handshake. I know they should, they should remember theirs, but how he, how he does it, I don't know. He was an active member of our PBIS team. He's not a stranger to volunteer at a pep assemblies. In fact, he has a fantastic voice. Acapella, probably one of your favorite movies, Pitch Perfect, I don't know. He sang Under the Bridge, was it? Under the Bridge, Red Hot Chili Peppers. We had a wrap-off a couple of years ago for a fundraiser and it was fantastic. I thought Red Hot Chili Peppers were in our gym. I have not seen a library as extensive as his classroom library. It's quite remarkable. Are you packed all up with that?
Uh, most of it's for our libraries.
Our libraries, you don't need a lot of it, that doesn't surprise me. He's an avid reader, he pushes literacy. He knows that's extremely important. He's a big nature lover. And he didn't know this about me, and I knew this about him because my mother-in-law taught with him for years, but he's an avid bird watcher. I thought I was good at watching birds because I'm a science teacher, might turn me on to birds and their calls and everything. But if you wanna know a bird call and you hear it, you ask him what it is and he will tell you what that bird is. He spends a lot of time in nature. Let's see, I already said about seniors coming back to say hi. I didn't, Mr. Jarzma's been great for kids and he will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Jarzma, for your service to Richmond schools.
I'll introduce Mr. Castle for our task.
Come on up, Mrs. Taylor. The high school retiree is Mrs. Jill Taylor. Mrs. Taylor has spent 40 years in education. Started her career in the middle of Mitten at St. Louis High School. And then we were lucky enough to get her down here to Richmond for the remaining 34 years of her career. She has spent her entire career working with our special education program, some of our most challenging students, and providing a wonderful learning environment for them. What we did is I went and I asked some of our staff to give you some notes on Mrs. Taylor. Don't be nervous, this is good. Some of the comments about Mrs. Taylor were that she's provided a loving, nurturing environment for her students her entire career. They noted that she's extraordinarily patient, especially with first-year principals, I can tell you that. That she gets the very most out of her students and prepares them for life outside of the classroom. She is absolutely adored by her students and fellow staff members. She's known outside of the classroom for her sense of humor, joke-telling, and the ability to lighten the mood even in the most tense of circumstances. Two teachers said she's acted as a mentor to them, just starting out, offering many, much guidance and support to them. She's known for her friendly demeanor and willingness to take on leadership roles in collecting and organizing events for fellow, for fellow staff members. As a staff, we will miss Mrs. Taylor's presence greatly, but even more, she'll be missed by the students of Richmond High School. Which is why I went to some of her students and asked what they remembered most about Mrs. Taylor. This is what they said. "Mrs. Taylor can always make me feel better when I'm having a bad day." "Mrs. Taylor makes me laugh and she is funny." "Mrs. Taylor helps me learn new things that I feel smart and that makes me feel happy." And finally, "Jill is always there for me when I need stuff." I think Mrs. Taylor knows who that was. "Mrs. Taylor's consistently been there for both her fellow teaching staff and students for the past 40 years and will be greatly missed by both. Thank you for everything you've done and for changing the lives of thousands of students of Richmond High School."
I'd just like to thank, say thank you for those that are retiring because as I listen to what people said about you. You know, we can teach the academics here, no issue. But when you take time to get to know students, get to know people, that changes lives and makes a big difference. So as Mr. Castle said, you have changed and impacted the lives of thousands of kids, even those that you don't even... even those that you don't even realize you've touched. So thank you so much for everything you've done in three years of service. Thank you.
All right. Thank you to all the retirees. We are going to go on to the next presentation, which is request for unpaid leave of absence, Mr. Wongson.
This time, I'd like to introduce Candace from our special education department for the secretarial contract. An unpaid leave of absence comes to the board for review. So she's here to request an unpaid leave of absence.
So I'm requesting leave of absence after a year and a half of pure torture in my life. I finally have a happy moment, and I'm getting married. So I'm requesting to have Monday, October 7th through October 15th, returning to work on October 16th.
Okay, are there any questions? No questions? Okay, we will be voting on this in two weeks. And then we will, Mr. Wongson will let you know, you don't have to come back in two weeks if you don't, if you aren't able to attend, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we've got the 2018-19 athletic program accomplishments, Mr. Reinhardt.
Good evening. I'd like to, at the end of the year, try to do a wrap-up. And just to give you a little bit of information about how athletically we did throughout the school year. So I'm going to start with some thank yous. I would like to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to lead such a great program and such a great group of coaches. I'd like to thank the coaches for the countless hours of dedicated service on and off the field. I also want to thank the staff for their support in the classroom and on the playing fields. I'd like to thank our administrators, Andy Castle, Keith Bartels, Becky Borwick, and Anthony Burkmeier, for their support and dedication to the athletic programs. I'd like to give a big shout-out to our secretaries, Joanne Ferranti, Darlene McNichol at the high school, Richard Shuboy and Susan Ricker at the middle school for their support in athletics and behind-the-scenes departmental work. And I'd like to lastly thank the school community for supporting all of our athletic programs, attending games, their volunteer work on fields and with practice, and their game help for helping us out at games when needed. Before I start, this, you're going to see a whole lot of accomplishments that student athletes have done this year. But there's a lot of, there's still some spring sports going on, and we're still waiting on some information for spring sports. So you're going to see a touch of some spring sports in here, but you won't see a lot. Six members of our senior class have received individual all-state academic recognition as scholar-athletes. It's different for every sport. Some sports do it, some sports do not have all-state academic recognition. We had Emily Gore go all-state individually in volleyball, Shannon Gaffney in volleyball, and Izzy Ferranti in volleyball. Emma Schaltron was individual academic all-state in volleyball and bowling. Ashley Telto in volleyball, and Noah Ryan in bowling. Six members of the class of 2019 received MHSA Scholar-Athlete recognition. They put in for a scholarship and received recognition through the MHSA for having a GPA of 3.5 or higher and receiving their varsity letter before their senior year. That is Izzy Ferranti, Emily Gore, Jesse Mountain, Ashley Telto, Jackson Allen, and Eric Pack. A few other academic accomplishments, like I said, we're waiting on all the spring awards. But over 200 of our student athletes have received a Blue Water Area Conference Scholar-Athlete Award, which is a 3.0 GPA or higher, and received a varsity letter. I think after the winter season, we had about 190, so we're still waiting on the spring. The varsity girls competitive cheer team was seeded the highest in their academic all-state honors. They had a 3.57 GPA, and they were seeded number one in Division III. The varsity volleyball team was academic all-state with a weighted GPA as a team, a 3.87 GPA. I thought that was outstanding. The varsity girls tennis team was also, I just received this yesterday and added it in here, they're academic all-state with a weighted GPA of a 3.5. And I know, and I'm waiting on the information, the girls soccer team was also academic all-state as a team. This is one of my favorite slides in the slideshow. It shows every single tournament team, an MHSA tournament team, and the amount or percentage of athletes on that team that had a 3.0 or higher. I want to point out boys' bowling, all of our boys' bowling team had a 3.0 or higher, which is outstanding. Ninety-two percent of our softball team, and several teams had eighty percent or more of the student athletes on their team with a 3.0 or higher. This is also one of my favorite slides. After computing all of the GPAs for athletes, for non-athletes, and the student body as a whole, you can see, if you take a peek at it, it's about an average of a half a point higher for student athletes. I know that coaches are pushing grades and pushing the importance of grades in school. So I know it's helping because you can see it in this slide. Over half, about fifty-three to fifty-four percent of our student body is participating in athletics as well. So it differs amongst grade levels, but over half of our student athletes are participating. One hundred and forty-nine of our students are participating in more than one sport. So they are being active and participating in several different areas. We have forty-nine of our students are three-sport athletes. That means they are participating in all seasons year-round. You can see that there's a handful of those student athletes in the senior column that are highlighted. Those student athletes were recognized on senior night as three-sport, four-year athletes. So they participated in three sports all four years. Emma Schaltron, Izzy Ferranti, Shannon Gaffney, Zachary Ray, Ashley Telto, and Ethan Wyatt. Were all participated in three sports all four years. We're going to move on to some of our significant athletic accomplishments. We had five league champions this year. We had a district championship, a regional championship, a state runner-up, and a state champion. We had one team qualify for the MHSA tournament based on the success of their season. And our wrestling team was recognized at the county banquet as the Division II, III, and IV team of the year. We had twenty-two, and I put or more because we're still waiting on our spring athletes, student athletes that have received all-state recognition. If you look next to their, and it's different in some sports. You can see the teams that they received. If it says first, that means they were in the upper echelon of athletes within their sport for their division. So you can see that we had a whole lot of first-teamers, which is very impressive and not an easy thing to do. Sixteen of our student athletes qualified and participated in individual MHSA state championships. So they qualified to compete as an individual for their sport. Not every sport offers that, obviously. But we had several of our student athletes that competed as individuals at the state level. At the end of April this year, we had our signing day for all of our student athletes that signed to commit themselves to intercollegiate athletics after they graduate high school. Jordan Anthony is going to be competing in the cheer team at Alma College. Jackson Allen will be competing as a basketball student athlete at St. Clair Community College. Aaron Shuboy will be competing in softball at University of Michigan Dearborn. Devon Nettles at Jackson Community College for baseball. Jonathan Tackeberry at St. Clair Community College for baseball. And Shannon Gaffney, I just learned the other day, will be a thrower for the Oakland University track team. So we had four of those student athletes participated at our signing day. You see two of them are not there because they signed after our signing day. A couple of our coaches were named Coach of the Year amongst their peers in the Blue Water Area Conference. Brandon Day, impressive trend for wrestling. Kelly Mathis for cheer season. Scott Evans for baseball. And Josh Presnell was named the Times Herald Area Coach of the Year, which I thought was very impressive. Every year, and this is why I thank the school community for their help, every year we host many, many events, many tournaments, and many Michigan High School Athletic Association activities. This year, we hosted the individual district and regional for the MHSA. We hosted the MHSA girls' basketball district. This past Saturday, we hosted the regional for softball through the MHSA. We hosted a freshman and varsity volleyball tournament, a very large varsity competitive cheerleading tournament. And our JV and varsity baseball teams competed in the Blue Water Classic, which is also hosted here, and our Blue Water Area Conference and McComb Area Conference baseball tournaments. Our middle school competes in six different middle school athletic programs with a total of fourteen teams. They competed in over a hundred contests, and 169 seventh and eighth graders participated in athletics at the middle school this school year. And now I just want to finish. Some good news this year, some miscellaneous information. This coming fall, we are going to be adding a girls' golf team. We had a few students that were interested and got a handful of student athletes to participate in a girls' golf season that will begin on August 12th. This information I'll be sending to you. I meant to send it to you last year, but I was waiting on the tally for the league trophy, and they never completed it. So I'm going to send you both this year's and last year's so that you can take a look and compare the two years. So you can see all this information and then some. I have even more information that is broken down for you to look at from the accomplishments of our student athletes this year. Please, if you have Facebook, follow us, Richmond Blue Devil Athletics. I also have a Twitter and an Instagram page for scores and updates and cancellations. So please follow us. And if you are looking for any information on scheduling, scores, and updates, you can also visit the website at rhsbluedevils.com.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Reinhardt? All right, that's all very impressive.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Reinhardt, you're up next to the athletic fields scoreboard advertisement presentation.
I'm going to apologize, this is in black and white, so it's kind of hard to see. Underneath our scoreboard on our athletic field is some white space that was meant for some advertisements. I think that you have this form that you could look at right now. I'm going to break it up into four spaces, so there'll be three-by-three boxes. And I am looking for advertisements to make more money for our athletic department. I'm looking at, because of the donation, putting a Tifa logo in the section all the way to the right and adding advertisements in three of those three-by-three boxes. The second piece of this information is anybody that is interested in donating can donate in one or a two-year, a one-year plan, a two-year or a three-year plan. And hopefully, we can make some more money for our athletic department.
Just to recall, the scoreboard on the athletic complex was donated by Tifa, and the intent was to have other organizations sponsor. Well, that didn't pan out. So Mr. Reinhardt approached me about using that space for fundraising for the athletic program. In your packet, you'll see the policy that was approved by the board. Basically, anything that's permanent or semi-permanent has to be required by the board's approval. You know, there's different sections in there determining screening of the advertising, making sure it's in alignment with the district's philosophy and mission. So this will come to you for an action item at the next board meeting. But at this time, if there's any other, if there's any questions for Mr. Reinhardt myself, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Since you're looking one-year, two-year, and three-year plans, so I take it what goes up there, the Tifa, that's permanent, that's always going to be there. So then these other are going to be what kind of product that comes on and off? If I'm only going to do it for a year, so what's the, what is it, a stick on there?
Yeah, a new sticker.
Okay.
The material that was designed for that white part was designed to put one of the outdoor stickers on that way you can just easily remove it and then put a new sticker on it if someone wants to change the advertising.
And then this is August 1st of this year, so is that what this, so? And then every year it'll be August 1st if you want to renew a plan? Okay. What happens if you have more than three?
First come, first served, I guess.
No, that's a good answer, that's, okay.
All right, Mr. Reinhardt? All right, next we have the budget presentation, Mr. Wongson.
Okay, we are, this is our fourth conversation regarding the budget. The stuff in yellow, which is a lot, is now known situations or known changes to the budget? The first line, line item one is retirement costs. Currently, we know the retirement costs are going up. It's a cost of around ninety-five thousand total when you look at payroll. There is a law that the state should be paying that in the budget, but it's not been approved yet. So right now, that's our obligation. If that, in any of the budgets that does pass, that has that, basically, we pay at what, a 24% rate? And then anything over that, which were about 38.39%, the state subsidizes with a line item in the state budget. With the rates going up, we don't know if they're going to continue subsidizing that. That's all part of the budget process. So we have to at least anticipate that dollar value that we're going to have to start paying for next year as we begin July 1, begins our expenses, even though at this point, the state really doesn't have a, isn't even near a final budget yet. Healthcare, we projected it, and you'll see the items in the blue at the bottom. Initially, when we started this process, we projected it to be a 3.4% increase, so we were budgeting $45,000. With the release of the heart caps that begin January 1, it actually was a 2% increase, so we only needed to budget $23,500 additional for our portion of the healthcare costs. Fourth-grade storage units, we have a line item, $52,000 that will go away. And just so the board knows, the wall is down in those classrooms. They will be building the new wall on Wednesday. And then the cabinets will be installed by the end of the week or beginning of next week for those fourth-grade classrooms. The middle school playground, we have a line item budget for $60,000, that will also go away. That playground is scheduled to begin this week. I don't know what the amount of rain we have, we may be a day late, but it is scheduled to be starting this week along with the preschool. The additional mulch for the playground, originally, we had $10,000 there in the next year's budget. We moved it into this year's budget because as soon as that playground's done, we want to get the safety mulch down because the temptation will be there for kids to play on it. We want to make sure it's down rather than wait until after July 1. So we're going to take it out of this year's budget. We have a line item for dugouts and baseball and softball duggets, dugouts? For $20,000, depending on when that finalizes and happens and what we actually do, we have to minimally do something there to buy us, depending on the upcoming bond. Culinary arts room, originally, the budget was $55,000. We reduced it by $45,000, so there's $10,000 remaining in that account. The idea that would be The idea, that would be for the materials needed to open the restaurant, silverware, plates, cups, coffee pots, the restaurant side, which will open second semester or scheduled to. The George Awk facilities assessment, we paid $9,000 for that cost, which was a, did for the bond conversations we've had that was needed to be done. The telephone investigation, originally, on the sheets, I had $15,000, it was in the air, but it was $12,000 what the board budgeted. It actually came in under $4,000 on that dollar amount, so. But the line item is budgeted currently at $12,000, so we would be taking that out. We have four teachers that participated or submitted applications for the voluntary severance plan for the budgetary purpose. I would recommend replacing three of those. I am watching that very closely because I, my guts telling me in August, we're going to be coming back adding that fourth one. We have some school of choice applications that are, have been submitted. They haven't finalized the process, so as they're finalizing them, we're going to have the, I fully anticipate we'll have the numbers to run the four sections in the, or that have that fourth person. That currently, there's the healthcare savings by not replacing one of the four at the moment. The VSIP cost of voluntary severance plan, our first payment would come out next year, which would be $40,000. We have one retiree teacher, and replacing that one retiree, those are the total costs when we look at FICO retirement. We assumed on all these replacements that whatever our current teacher has, if they have full family coverage, we assumed a full family coverage in the replacement. All that will come out after we've hired the staff and they do their open enrollment period, which will come out in the first amendment, which would be January, February timeframe. We have a couple of partial FTEs from teachers that we do not need to fill based on the scheduling. And in this scenario, we had originally targeted about a 5% supply reduction. In this scenario, reducing the budget as I'm showing up there, we wouldn't need to touch the supply dollars for them. It's important that you look at the bottom and you look at the assumptions because we're building a budget that is, maybe, we're building a budget with a lot of assumptions and unknowns from the state. As of today, June 10, we do not know what our per pupil allocation is going to be, and we don't expect it to come until August, September. I would even forecast that there's a possibility that the government would shut down October 1st and 2nd while they figure out that. Hopefully, it won't. But when you think about, they don't have to approve a budget at the state level until October 1st, September 30th. We're already July, August, three months into our school year, operating with some assumptions that we don't know. We're assuming that the grant revenues, if we decrease, if they're decreased, that we will decrease the expenses appropriately, which may involve staffing reductions that are paid for currently out of grant. We don't have any of those numbers by online. We're assuming the 31A, which deals with a lot of our at-risk courses at the high school and middle school. The law is changing that we now have to move some $31A to the elementary school. However, in the house budget that was introduced, they go back to the old language. So we potentially could start the school year with what the law is telling us, they approve a budget that changes it, and more than likely, we're going to have to change it midstream or figure out another source. This budget does not include any food service transfers, so the money from the food service account. In the past, we've allocated about $20,000 to transfer in. We're not assuming any of those. We are also assuming what we currently have budgeted for gas, heating, water, electrical. We maintain those for next school year. That could change depending on gas prices and heating costs in our winter. We are assuming that the state is not giving us any reduction to our per pupil allocation. We are assuming also that we're not getting any increase, but that they aren't taking dollars away. Many of us, if not all of us, have some memory of when they took $470 per pupil away in January, which devastated many districts. And many districts are still trying to get out of that, even to this day. And the last one is, Tammy mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, the GAZV, A4, our student activities account now have to be either left in as student activities or has to be part of the general fund. So we have to work through all of those. So that may look a little different when you receive the budget. We're not taking money away from people or anything like that. We have to classify it and record it a different way. So what I, if this is what the board is okay with, what you would receive at the next board meeting is that at 6:30, we'd have the truth and budgeting meeting, and 7 o'clock would be our regular board meeting where you'd actually approve the budget. But if you recall from the February amendment, you would see that type of document by function code. And what we would do is take the dollar values on this list and equate them to either a reduction or an increase in the specific function code that it's allocated to. We are still working on assignments. You know, evaluations were just completed last week. We're finalizing, finalized scheduling, so I'll be meeting with the administrators here. So in terms of the dollar value, what's allocated towards elementary, middle, and high school, it's going to be that, whatever's currently there, less a portion of that number. And then, once we know where everybody's at, all of our new hires, we've assumed a certain dollar value that we hired staff in on. If we hired them at a different level, that would be reflected in the amendment. If we assumed a full family healthcare and the person is a single person, that would be amended in the budget once we knew where everybody landed in staffing allocations as well as their benefit packets they chose. So you would get that same document we've done for many years by function code, but you'll see that when you look at it compared to the FY '19 budget compared to the FY '20, you'll see a reduction in those values to the corresponding function code. We aren't cutting programs. We have not, we are not as tight in scheduling as we have been in the past because with, you know, our preliminary numbers, we currently have, as of last week, we had 81 packets of kindergartners, and we know of 110 names. That would be remarkable, to have 110 kindergartners. Preschool's up too, in terms of the names. People sometimes haven't finished the packets, but we're following that up. Our school of choice application goes through the first Friday in September, based on who has left us in terms of graduation, who's coming in. We have more students coming in through school of choice than we have that graduated as seniors, which is a good sign, too. The programs that this board has put in place from not only the high school, the CT, but you know, we're only one of, just a handful of districts in the state of Michigan to have a K-12 robotics program is pretty impressive, so. I will answer any questions you have on the budget, if there's anything that wants to be adjusted or changed. I did get one question regarding the dollars allocated towards board workshops. And I have what we've paid in the past, but I put in your packet the policy, or the bylaws, 175.1 regarding the process for school board workshops and conferences, so. Questions?
That question was mine about conferences. Why are only 101s paid or offered to be paid? When it says in the bylaws that it's encouraged to take workshops and go to conferences, so. I didn't know if that was something anyone was interested in adding so that we can educate ourselves and do this job.
Well, it's taken away so as not to use funds, put those funds somewhere else. And so, as a board, we decided that the most important was the 101, so that would be paid for. And you can still take all the classes you want, and some of us have and have paid for them ourselves, but that's where that came from.
I think we only had $500 in the revenue, something like that?
Something like that, mhm.
Yeah, this year, we spent $570. Last year, it was zero. The year before, it was up to $720. In 2016, we spent $460. Those are what the district paid. There are others that paid, that the board never reimbursed the district as we registered them.
So is the amount that you just listed just for 101s, is that what we've paid for so far out of that account, just 101?
That's Tifa what we've paid for. I can't think of, since I've been here, any other course that we've done other than 101. School Board 101.
I see where Sheri's coming from. I think just sitting in this seat for the first time, it's, there's a lot that I don't know about being president. I know there is a president workshop that can help to teach you the incident. I think it would be helpful because we don't know who is going to be sitting in this seat from year to year. I think it would be helpful if the board did invest in sending the board president to a workshop, having not attended myself. I think it would have been helpful. It had have been offered, I probably would have attended. I have not attended that as of yet. So I see where Sheri is coming from. I think it would be helpful if some funds were allocated. I don't know, what do other districts typically do? Brian, do you know?
It varies on the district. The ones that I have closely talked to, they allocate a, kind of an interest or who's interested in what you're, and kind of figure a dollar value at that point. So like I said, if you were interested in the school board president workshop and it costs X dollars, just adding up what everybody's interest is and establishing a dollar value. My former district, there was a dollar value that was a couple thousand dollars, though they never expended it, but it was always there. Many districts use that funds because they'll send representatives to the state and national school board association where you have an opportunity to be more at the national level, particularly. I think they go at the end of, till January, February, sometime of that, from the school board association. There's usually a group that goes. And so, some districts will use that, that, those funds to pay for that.
So if the current policy is listed as if approved, what would be the process right now for, I know the past board has said 101 is what is going to be paid for, but if the policy reads if approved, where would a board member, if Sheri wanted to attend something, what would be the process for her to get that approved?
The process is that we pay for 101. That's the decision that the board made. So if you want to have a discussion to change that, that would be something you would want to do down the line of the meeting.
Well, I'm just thinking, the policy doesn't say anything about 101, and that's the only one that we're paying for. So where did we, did we update the policy when we said that?
No, we didn't do anything with the policy. We said as a board that 101 was what we were going to do. So that's where it sits right now. The policy set, whatever the policy says.
Yeah.
That's where, and it's not a past board, it's this board that is seated right now, whether people were on that board or not.
Right.
That's what the board decided. So if someone wants to go in a different direction, put it on the agenda and have it be a discussion.
Right, I would, I- Well, that wasn't the intention for tonight, did we?
No, that's, uh-uh. No, this is a completely different-
No, no, I did ask Brian to put it on as an agenda item for discussion.
Okay, but, but the reality is, it's not, it's not really on the agenda for discussion because it's not an item for discussion. Make it an item for discussion so that everyone is prepared to discuss it, the pros and cons of it, and have it a true discussion as opposed to thrown into the budget.
Well, I think now, since we're making the line item, it would make sense for us to discuss-
The line item's already there.
Yeah, but we haven't approved the budget yet for next year.
All I'm saying is if you want to have, there, because there's a whole lot that can be said about this, what to do with it, what not to do with it, and I don't-
Historically, in the past, we had a small committee get together and actually rewrite the policy if it needed to be rewritten. And I'm not opposed to that.
Sure.
Having it rewritten if it needs to be rewritten, but I, I also was confused why it was in the packet when it wasn't an item on the agenda. I didn't know why it was on there. And so, I understand that you're throwing it in now, but I would have liked to have looked to see like how many other districts do do this and how many other, you know, what classes are available and what, who would be interested in going to them and having that full discussion on it.
Okay. Well, I guess if you guys have questions, I would put them together and we can throw it on the next board meeting on the agenda. Because I think at the very least, the policy has to be rewritten because it doesn't, to me, it doesn't match up with what the board had.
Right.
Well, then, I think if that's the direction you want to go, then that's the direction you need to go.
Yeah, right.
And it wouldn't be for the next meeting. You would-
Can't have questions for two weeks?
If you're talking about you think that the policy, if you're stating you think the policy needs to change, that's a whole different discussion if we think back to, what was the policy that we, we had changed?
The signage, naming a building or naming a-
Yeah.
Yes.
So if that's, if that's truly the crux of what it is, that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, I'm not sure that we need to update the policy until we have discussion on what we even want it to look like. We don't even know what we want it to look like.
Can I, or you can clear what, the current policy says if any of us currently would like to take a class, you would just come to the board and have a discussion amongst ourselves? And then, vote whether or not we decide that person should go? Is that how the policy is written currently? Am I understanding that?
I don't know that that's-
It references in the policy, each section here, each board member, they expect to report back after they've attended. If approved, the policy doesn't define the approval process. So whether it's a discussion at the board table or whether it's unauthorized to a small group or to the board president, that's not defined in the policy.
Actually, the policy refers to what can be reimbursed, I think is, if you read it, that's what it says. But I'm just saying, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having, having the discussion, but I just don't think that, to me, it's thrown into the budget. And it's, it's a bigger discussion, I think, that we need to have because there are three brand-new people sitting here, four of us, who are part of the discussion that we had on, yes, one, two, three, four, right? So I just think it's not a bad idea to have, to talk about the policy and what you want to go for it, but I don't think it should be thrown in in the middle of the budget.
So do we want to commit then? Do you guys want to do a committee like we did for the signage?
What are you suggesting, Sarah?
No, I'm saying, you had said, you had mentioned we did a committee, which, absolutely right. Do we want to have a committee to get together to review what we have and kind of talk about it and bring it back? Would people be interested in that?
Well, but the reality is, what's really wrong with the policy? I'm not sure. We made, we made a decision as a board with respect to budgetary talks. So if we think maybe, maybe the policy should reflect that kind, you know, whether it's, you know, things that say something that the budget is such, you know, that, I'm not sure. So if that's what you're looking, that you want to do?
Well, I think board member Zuby's point was, when she brought this up to me, the request was to have a discussion on what the policy should look like and entertain the idea of changing, which is why I thought we would discuss before we had a committee. But if you guys want to have a committee first and bring it back, that's fine. Or we can have a discussion on the next board meeting, and we can then see where people's heads are at with it, and then we can create the committee and kind of get all the wording, right? Whatever, to me, that would make the most sense, to discuss it, see where the majority of the board is with what we want to do with it, and then have a committee to create a policy that reflects it. This, even if we kept everything the same, though, I don't think this policy is clear enough. It doesn't say anything about school board 101. It just says if approved. It does not line the approval process, so I think it is confusing.
I don't, I don't think it's confusing at all.
Oh, I agree with you.
It talks about, talks about what can be reimbursed. School board 101 just happens to be the most important, biggest, whatever that you take when you get on the board. No.
Right here, it says if approved. So how would, how would it be approved then? What is the process for that? If I wanted to attend a workshop, how do I get it approved to get reimbursed? If that's-
Well, because right now, what the board decided was that we were just going to do 101. So that when the new people came on board, new people went to 101. I'm assuming everybody's gone to 101, okay?
Yeah.
So, and you have questions about the board president workshop, okay? That was something that hadn't been part of the discussion back when we were saying we only wanted this amount of money and we wanted to pay for 101. So if we want to open it up to other stuff, then yes, you need to have a conversation about.
Which is, to me, that would make sense before we do the policy revision. Because we don't really know what we're revising it to until we have a discussion about it.
That's the whole idea of having a committee discuss it.
What's that?
That's the whole idea of having a committee discuss it, right?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I'm not sure it's, it's a bad idea to, not a bad idea to, if there are three people that want to have conversation about this, what would the plan, and obviously, I'm sure Sheri would want to be a part of it since this was her issue.
Sure.
So there's someone on the board with the issue. I think it's have a conversation about it, the direction that you think board member workshops need to go, and then talk about the policy and then go back with something.
So you want to do committee and then discussion? So you want the committee to meet first?
I mean, I think that's how we did it the last time.
So Sheri, would you like to be in with me?
I assume.
Is anyone else interested in being up to me?
I'm interested.
Chris is? Do we want to get one more?
I'm interested.
Okay, so I will let you guys meet, whatever, and then you guys can bring back whatever you have some ideas for us. Just let me know when we're on the agenda. Thank you.
Are there any questions regarding the budget?
Any more questions? So we will begin preparing the budget to show that we have basically the $280,000 on how we fix the or address the structural problem, as well as any increases that we have because of what we know as of today. Again, it could change in two weeks, but we will go forward. As far as the conversation, the last one, we will keep the budget as is because we didn't make any recommendation to reduce the budget. And at any time, the board has the ability to alter and change the budget on any item. So we will begin working on it, preparing for that.
All right, thank you, Brian. Next, we have public comment, a portion of our meeting where the audience can come in and address the board. You have three minutes to speak. It's not a question and answer period. If you'd like a phone call back, you can leave your name and phone number. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Moving on, we have the student representative report, Lexi.
To start off, I'll start with the Lee School. They had a very busy end of the year with testing, field trips, and PTO-sponsored events. May 23rd was the preschool graduation, and on this day, nine third graders were given bikes from the Richmond Masons during the Bikes for Books Assembly. May 24th, all students gathered around the flagpole to say the morning pledge of allegiance in honor of Memorial Day. Also on the 24th was the school-wide PBIS raffle assembly. On May 28th, the Richmond Police Department provided a pizza lunch for third and fourth grade students. The 29th was the PTO-sponsored field day, and they were very grateful that they didn't get rained on. The 30th was the third and fourth grade M-step raffle, which recognized and celebrated the students' efforts. June 3rd was the change wars assembly. Students brought in over $1,000 worth of change, and this led to Mr. Cochen, Mr. Gillespie, and Mr. Stevenson getting dunked in the dunk tank. All students participated in the color run on June 4th. June 5th through the 7th were the grade level awards ceremonies, and also on the 7th was the third and fourth grade clapout. Moving to the middle school, their annual 5K went great, and a big thanks to Lieutenant Colonel Baden-Hammer for being the guest speaker, all the sponsors, and to Officer Fred, Jeff White, Kyle Bartels, Monica Nicolopoulos, and Bridget Shuboy for helping it to run so smoothly. The fifth graders really enjoyed their time at the one-room schoolhouse field trip and their annual Beebe Street Park Day. The middle school's choir concert went excellent, and the third and fourth graders visited the middle school with a tour, which included a question and answer session, and this is a great way to introduce them to their new school. The award ceremonies and eighth grade promotion were very successful. The seventh graders took their annual field trip to the African-American Museum, and the middle school is wrapping up this past school year and looking forward to the next. Lastly, for the high school, I have several big announcements. May 16th, the senior awards ceremony was held in the high school auditorium. Eighty-five students received recognition for their academic or athletic achievements, and thousands of dollars in scholarships were given that evening. This was a great way to honor the class of 2019 and to show off all of their hard work. The high school would like to thank all of the community members and businesses that supported the ceremony with both their presence and monetary contributions. May 22nd marked the graduation ceremony for the class of 2019. Student speakers were outstanding, and the ceremony was a great way to send the senior class off proudly. Thursday, May 29th, was the underclassmen awards at the high school. Over 250 students were honored with nearly 600 individual academic awards. The high school administration and students would like to thank the teaching and support staff for all of their hard work they put into this year to make RHS a great place to learn. Thank you all very much for all of your efforts. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have a closed session for student disciplinary hearing. I'm looking for a motion.
Pursuant to Section 8B of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the purposes of student disciplinary hearing for student 032719-C.
Support.
We are back in open session at 9:46. Next up, we have the superintendent and legislature electus, Brian.
I will, we don't have a whole lot. I just want to congratulate everybody. We ended the year last Friday, a school year of a successful year. Fifteen awards ceremonies, which is pretty impressive. I'm going to shake the hand of students in here, all their accomplishments. The house budget was released, so now we're just waiting for the resolution to pass the budget, so. Last thing, I just want to promote to the community, free breakfast and free lunch for all students 18 and under began today. We have three sites this year. We certainly added the high school, some of our camps, and we have a variety and the BUC are also.
Fifteen awards.
It's raining today, they served over 20 lunches, and I believe 15 breakfasts at Beebe Street today.
The house budget was released, and now we're just waiting.
Thank you. Next up, we have the items of interest from the board. Are there any board members who would like to speak?
I had the chance to attend eighth grade promotion, graduation. It's always, always a fun event, the nervous excitement of the eighth graders, of the unknown of going to high school. But a good-looking bunch of kids that will turn into young adults in the next four years, looking forward to seeing how they grow and mature and seeing them on their high school graduation day.
It was exciting to attend that event, and I had a chance to attend a lot of events over the last few weeks, and I want to thank Mr. Walmsley for always representing our school very well, and also just being at those events. You're a visual at so many events over these last few weeks. I'm amazed at what I see you at, and I'm only at a small number of them. And I also wanted to thank our administrators for just really putting a lot of thought in things, whether it's the preschool graduation, the, you know, eighth grade promotion, graduation, award ceremonies. They're always really put out in a game, and I'm really proud to be part of the Blue Devil community when things like that happen. Very good.
I just wanted to mention the track team, two weeks ago finished their season, their spring season, and they won their conference. We also had the top gun shooter, Isai Belozian. He came in, he had an average of 24.4, the highest average is 25, so. And we also had eight Blue Devils make the All-State team, which is the top 100 in the state for averages.
With eight of them?
Eight of them, yeah. It was Isai Belozian, Caleb Zalatovich, David Medow, Zach Ellery, Robert Medow, Anthony Ellis, Tanner Franzosi, and Kyle Tronley. So out of over 1,400 players. And also this past weekend, the coaches and team put on their second annual R-Lam tournament, where they, it's Richmond, Lake Shore, Armida, and Memphis teams came out and shot 100 rounds. And they have a jug which goes to the winner, and Richmond won it again in the second year in a row. And we also, Caleb Zalatovich was the top varsity gun. He shot a 98, that's 98 rounds out of 100. And then this weekend, June 15th, they're going to states in Mason, Michigan, where they'll try to defend their state title, the state championship last year, so they have a chance because they're top shooters.
Lots of good stuff. Anyone have anything else? Next up, we have our action items. First up is the approval of the voluntary severance plan applications.
This was presented to our staff, and the criteria was to have at least five. We did not get five, we had four take advantage of it. I would still recommend that the Board of Education approve the four, as it does when we lose the talent, it would be greatly missed, but it does help us in resolving the budget discussion.
Okay, I am looking for a motion.
This was presented to our staff, and.
I move to accept the voluntary severance packages as outlined in the attached documentation.
I would still recommend that the Board of Education approve the four, as it does when we lose the talent.
Okay, any discussion?
It would be greatly missed.
All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Sarah is absent. Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. Okay, next up, we have the board action on student 032719-C discipline hearing, and I am looking for a motion.
I. Go ahead.
I motion, following a closed session hearing, the board votes to reinstate student 032719-C, consistent with the attached documentation.
Aye.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion?
The attached documentation will be the resolution from the previous board meeting.
Other than it's so nice to have somebody get through and come back the other side, and it's exciting.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Angela?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Sarah is absent, and I vote aye, motion passes. And next up is the board action on student 032719-A discipline hearing. I'm looking for a motion.
I motion that following a closed session hearing, the board votes to in-house expulsion for student 032719-A, consistent with the attached documentation.
Aye.
Okay, any discussion?
The attached document will reflect what the board's request was during the hearing.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Sarah is absent. I vote aye, motion passes. And we are now going into a closed session.
We have to make a motion. We have to make a motion, or what?
To go into closed session?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, so next up, we have the closed session for the purpose of negotiations. Okay, so looking for a motion to go into the closed session. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Aye.
Pursuant to Section 15.2688C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of negotiations.
Support.
We are going into closed session.
Do a roll call.
Oh, okay. Sorry. We'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Sheri?
I'm looking for a motion.
Sarah is absent. Kyle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
And we won't be coming back for a vote.
And we will not be coming back for a vote.